All right. Good morning, everybody. It is Wednesday, July nineteenth. It is ten AM, ten AM on all three clocks. My God, I love that. So welcome. This is Lincoln County Board of Commissioners meeting. All three commissioners are here, so we do have a full forum today. First up is recognition and proclamation. Our first proclamation is proclaiming July sixteenth through twenty seventh, twenty twenty three as National Pretrial Services Week. And I think Commissioner Hall is going to read that one.
Glad to. Reclaiming July sixteenth through twenty second, two thousand twenty-three, Ethnological Pretrial Services Week in Lincoln County. Whereas pretrial staff members are an essential part of the criminal justice system. And whereas pretrial staff members uphold the law with dignity while recognizing the right of the public to be safeguarded from criminal activity. And whereas pretrial staff members are responsible for monitoring clients while in the community. And whereas pretrial staff members are trained professionals who provide services and referrals for clients. And whereas pretrial staff members work in partnership with community agencies. And whereas pretrial staff members promote prevention, intervention, and advocacy. Now therefore, me, the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners, call upon all citizens of Lincoln County and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of July sixteenth through twenty-second as National Pretrial Services Week in Lincoln County, in which all of our citizens may honor all pretrial staff members for their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibility. This nineteen day of July, twenty twenty-three.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Hall.
Good morning, Commissioner. For the record, my name is Kurt Lindbergh. I'm Lincoln County Sheriff, and thank you for reading that proclamation, Commissioner Hall. Just a little background on pretrial specifically in our county. In two thousand seventeen, a team from Lincoln County, including Judge Bockhart, who is present today, and myself attended a grant-funded four-day training on implementing pretrial justice in Oregon. I don't think any of us that attended during that four-day period thought what we could imagine where we are today or how quickly we got there. But the program began in October of two thousand and eighteen. The Board of Commissioners did a budget process through two full-time employees as pretrial specialists within our office. And again, I just, it is incredible how quickly and just how successful this program has been over the years. Our goals initially were to reduce forced releases from the jail, which we had a high of over seven hundred at one point, improve the fail-toappear rates, killing the right people in jail and being more effective for sentencing by the courts, and reduce the revolving door of individuals coming in and out of the facility. And I can, you know, there's data behind this, and you're going to hear from a few people. You're going to hear from actually a client of all these things that I've, that have absolutely, we've knocked it out of the park as far as achieving those goals. All while maintaining what they call the three main components, the three M's, the pretrial justice, which is to maximize public safety, maximize court appearances, and maximize pretrial release and minimize detention for individuals. This year's theme that we have is stronger together, which I think is absolutely a perfect thing because it's because of the great team that is doing all this work that with all of our partners that were able to achieve these goals. They work so well together. I couldn't be more satisfied with how this program has progressed over the years. And if you don't mind, I'm going to have a couple of people come up and speak. I'm going to start with Jeff.
Howie? Thanks. Morning, Commissioners. For the record, I'm Jeff Howie. I am one of the pretrial commissioners for the Sheriff's Office. Next to me is Mr. Matthew Johnson. He's a client, former client, actually. He's no longer on the pretrial program, but former client of the, of pretrial. In years past, we've kind of presented some numbers, statistics. I kind of wanted to do something different this year. I think that gets kind of dry. So I wanted to kind of introduce somebody that we've worked with over the years and who's somebody who's been very successful since getting off the pretrial program. So Mr. Johnson, he was in and out of jail quite a bit. We first put him in our pretrial house. He was a candidate that we identified as needing housing. He had some mental health issues. He's been open about that. He said that I could share that with you guys. And drug and alcohol issue. So those are the three main issues that we knew that we had to address for him to be successful. We put him in the house the first time mid-May last year. Made it about five days. Didn't do too well. He had some issues when came back to jail. No problem. We re-interviewed him, decided to keep him in there a little bit, and then gave him another shot at the house. He had a little bit of time to dry out. August, mid-August, again, he lasted about five days. So wasn't, wasn't great. I don't give a lot of people second chances at the house if they're not successful. Did give Matt second chance, never given anybody a third chance. Hasn't happened. Matt came back into custody, I think, around late August or September, went to the state hospital and spent about five months there. Two months at the state hospital, three at jail. Okay, so five months total where he was able to get clean, kind of get, get right. And I was contacted by Lincoln County Mental Health when he was at the state hospital. They were looking at placements. And when they asked me, I said, absolutely not. We've already given him two chances. I don't do third chances at the house. I really don't do second chances. Well, the therapist, being my wife, I had to take the call. So I took the call and I made and I agreed to at least meet with Matt. I told her, listen, I'll meet with him. No promise. I'm not, I'm not going to say that yes. Last time he was in jail, he wasn't very happy with me. I just don't know that it'll be a good fit this time. But I took the meeting and in the get-go, and that kind of blew me away with the difference in just the way he carried himself, the way he was answering questions. And so that five months really did him well. So we did. We decided, yes, once he gets released from the hospital, we'll bring him back to the house. Only person I've let in the house three times. He came back December twelfth of two thousand twenty-two and hit the ground running. We made sure that he had appointments with Lincoln County Mental Health weekly, sometimes more than, more than once a week. Phoenix Wellness Center, he was his drug and alcohol providers, treatment providers, I should say. And he met with them multiple times a week, groups, you know, individual sessions. We had him going to additional meetings that were hosted for P and P for different classes. And he didn't miss anything. I mean, he really took it on himself to change the way he was handling his life. And while he was there, he was able to, well, first of all, he had a warrant. Let me back it up. He had a warrant out of Washington State. That was one of our other boundaries. I spoke to the judge about the, the release plan for here that we would get him up to Washington. We got him up there to clear the warrants, was able to get off parole there completely. His parole officer went ahead and he finished his stuff there. He had a Lynn County case as well. He completed that case while in our house. And he also completed the case that was the Lincoln County case. So he completed all his cases. He's only on probation now here. He's looking to get off in four or five months. So he's doing really good. That was able to find a job while he was at the house. He still has that job. He was able to find housing in his own. So now he's in a house that's no longer pretrial. Didn't have his license for a couple of years. Got his license back recently, and he's bought himself a car. So now he's able to get himself around to his job. He's got his house. And he's just, he's really what we try to do with the pretrial program. And with, like the sheriff mentioned, with all the help of our community partners, couldn't, couldn't do without. So everything you wanted to.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess words, you can only get so much more describing, you know, my situation and the person I was when I first met Jeff. Now, I mean, you guys just have to take his word for it. I wasn't probably the nicest guy, or you know what I mean? Said a lot of stuff, you know, to sheriffs and everything. And where I'm at right now, I want to give, you know, glory to God. Number one, but then right behind him is everybody that sit next to me and everything they've done for me, and obviously, you know, Phoenix never given up on me. And I got my mental health issues, you know, me wrapped up. And so I'm really grateful, you know, like Jeff didn't have to let me in there that third time. And, you know, and it shows a lot, shows compassion, you know what I mean? I guess, you know, I wouldn't be where I am right now if it weren't for that program, you know, so I'm stable. I see my counselor, Shondi, you know, I mean, I go to work and I can't express where I was at the beginning. I mean, the lack of hope in life and everything. So that being said, thank you, guys. And I hope you guys continue to put, you know, I mean, everything you can in this program. And even if only one person, you know, I mean, I don't want to sound narcissistic. But if one person were to succeed out of a year, I mean, that would warm my heart. Thank you, guys, very much. For sharing your story.
Yeah, thank you for sharing your story. Just a big congratulations.
And and I'd like to bring the Bockhart up. I think that's a few things that they do. You know, that's really what it's all about as she makes her way up here, you know, no matter all those statistics and everything. Again, we want to show the impact that we're having on people. And, you know, it's really what it's all about, so.
Following the dry portion of the program. So I did pull some statistics. One thing OJ D is good at is data collection. And so, but the human side of it is when you have to see the faces do it. But these programs, they cost money to run, but it's a wise investment. The thousands, the human aspect, but the thousands of dollars that you're saving, getting people, the cost of incarceration, getting people out of custody. I feel very fortunate when I go to my meeting statewide, the level of cooperation, what you have here in Lincoln County is unique. And while the Senate bill passed that put these, implement these programs, not every county bought into them. And they're not being utilized in the way they should be. And I'm proud to say Lincoln County is thinking a very wise investment and you have people, community partners who are invested in this. It's a huge asset for the court. Being able to release people, get people quicker out of custody, we've noticed that concrete numbers are, are failure to appear rates have plummeted. I should say that the, when we, we launched this and then COVID and then everything just kind of wasn't really beneficial to try and track our numbers because of failure to appear rates and everything. During that, it's a difficult time to say that actually seeing the success of it through that period. But they didn't get out of control like some counties. Okay, so we may, we may manage it, I think, pretty successfully. So just so we end, some of the data that I was able to pull, so from two thousand and eighteen, our known FDA rate was about seventy percent, seventy-five percent. This year in two thousand twenty-three, people that would have cases filed who have not failed to appear are running eighty-three percent of our cases. People are showing up to court have not failed to appear. Persons with just one failure to appear, we were running a high of about twenty-two percent. This year, we're running fourteen-point-four percent. Okay, with just one failure to appear. So the numbers that we spiked for a little bit in twenty to twenty-twenty-two, which we expected, we knew. Now we're coming right back down to numbers that are below the two thousand eighteen numbers. So we've really started to quantify the effect of this program now. So I just wanted to bring that, because that is, you know, costs the community, costs of the court, costs of the jail. When these warrant issues of people come back into custody. So I just wanted to be here today to express the court's appreciation for this. And the good news is we're just expanding it. So we just got approval for funding for, for Oregon Judicial Department to hire a pretrial, release assistance officer. My goal with that new position is just to augment what we currently have in place. We're not doing anything, but it will also give as an OJ D employee, access to some of the data that I think will be helpful in informing some of our decisions about the pretrial program and where we can improve. So I think it's just going to get better. And create up some of their time for some of the other things that they want to be able to do in the field. So thank you for your support in this program. And should be proud of what Lincoln County is doing right now.
Thank you, Judge Bockhart. And that was Brian. So I'm not having charts yet.
No questions, just a big thank you to everybody, like so many of our successful ventures. It's the result of a partnership. And thanks to Matthew, we know firsthand how this program really is changing and saving lives.
No, just appreciation and thank you, Matt, as well, telling your story. Thanks to you all.
Yeah, one last thing I'd like to do before we take a vote on this is I feel like we have like our Phoenix Wellness Group at the back and there's a bunch of other people from the Sheriff's Office and confirmation. So for everybody in the room who's involved in this, why don't you all stand up so we can see who all of you are? All right, great. All right, thank you. Thank you.
Well, I would move that we proclaim July sixteen through twenty-two, twenty-three as National Pretrial Services Week in Lincoln County.
I'll happily second that motion.
Okay, I'm motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Thanks. All right, next up is declaring July sixteen through twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three as pro, pro, I'm going to start over. Probation parole on community supervision week in Lincoln County. I think Commissioner Miller is going to read that one.
Yes, declaring July sixteen through twenty-three, two thousand twenty-three is for probation community supervision week in Lincoln County. The Lincoln County Board of Commissioners finds juvenile and adult community supervision is an essential part of the criminal justice and public safety system. Lincoln County Community Justice Professionals uphold the law with dignity and affirm the right of public to be safe, guided, guarded from criminal activity. LCCJ staff hold adult and juvenile justice-involved individuals accountable. And LCCJ staff help the county and criminal justice system enhance community safety, reduce criminal activity, and help the community make effective use of resources. LCCJ staff protect public safety and care and concern that they are trained professionals who arrange and provide prevention, intervention, and behavior change services to justice-involved individuals which are affecting and reducing criminal behavior and recidivism. LCCJ staff support victims and advocates for the restoration of communities harmed by crime and delinquent behavior. The Lincoln County Board of Commissioners proclaims July sixteenth through July twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three as probation parole on community supervision week in Lincoln County in honor, recognition, and respect for the dedication and contribution of the county's community justice officers and staff.
All right, welcome. I'll give you the secret name for the record, please.
Tony Kappa, Community Justice Director for Lincoln County.
Thank you, Tony. If you can maybe bring the mic just a little closer.
Yes, it was all drilled into us by staff.
So I've had a long pickups, and this is one that has short pickup, very interesting.
Good morning. So I'd like to say that I'd like to start out a little bit about what we have, what we've been doing with our, our beds, our usage and, and how successful we've been with our JRI prison usage back in July of two thousand twenty-one for Lincoln County. We had nine hundred seventy-eight months at this time was placed on a one-year provisional JRI funding. It's basically, it was a probation of sorts, you know, that we were going to lose that funding if we continued down the trends that we were going. And in April twenty-twenty-two, after one year of doing that, our JRI prison usage dropped to seven hundred eighty, which was still above the baseline. And the baseline is based on what the state averages are throughout the state. And so our baseline was higher than the average. And because, and as a result of that, we were going to lose that money. CJC sent out their JRI program manager to assist us, to talk to us, explain to us what we were doing, what we were dealing with. We started working closely with our, our Judge, Judge Bockhart, and talking about the diversion program and downward departure. And fortunately, after many months of doing that, getting these individuals in these programs and successfully working with these individuals, spending, placing much more emphasis on, on full wraparound services with these individuals. One year later, we are at, we have decreased fifty-two percent in three hundred and sixty, down to three hundred and sixty-nine months. That's a fifty-two decrease in prison usage from April twenty-two to April twenty-three. And as a result of that, we are only one of four counties who's in the green for this, for this year that we're at now.
Director Kappa, what did you see? The number of months was April twenty-twenty-three?
And April twenty-three was three hundred and sixty-nine months.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's a major decrease. You know, thanks to Judge Bockhart and all the great teams that we have, you know, working with these individuals. It's been, it's been, been a crazy ride for a little bit. There was kind of, and nerve-wracking, I mean, having to deal with these issues. These crimes that we're talking about are specifically for drug crimes, driving crimes, and property crimes. So these, these are the ones that we really emphasize, you know, I mean, in addition to other cases, of course, but these cases, we specifically had to, to make sure that we were putting as many resources we could to, to do what we could, you know, reduce that, those numbers. These are generally lower-risk type crimes and, and individuals that hopefully we can get them back into, to the community.
Any questions? But you said downward departure.
Downward departure is a, a, it's a sentence essentially that if you, Judge Bockhart, do you want to explain this a little?
Welcome back, Judge Bockhart. Yeah. The Bockhart back. So a downward departure is if somebody, based on the crimes they pled to, the sentence, according to the sentencing guidelines, is a presumptive prison sentence. The court has the option that certain findings are made to impose a probationary sentence. Instead of the presumptive prison sentence, if they're successful on probation, they never serve the prison sentence. If they're not successful and they come back on a probation violation, these prison sentences could still be imposed. Okay, that sort of hangs over them for the time they're on probation. We have mentioned specialty courts, which I think are responsible for a lot of these downward departures. About seventy-five percent of our participants in our specialty courts are on downward departures. So there's real partnership between parole probation and parole probation have been very supportive of every single one of those specialty courts. And we could not run that without the probation officer assigned to them. The reason they're successful is because of the accountability and the investment of resources from the probation department in that, in these programs. Without that, we would not be successful. So I know it costs a lot of money to fund that, but it's a very wise investment. The prison dollars that are not cost of incarceration for these individuals, the huge savings. Much of that's humans' cost savings, yes, and economical savings, but also people's savings, not as folks in pursuit.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. None for me. This is wonderful to hear.
Yeah, I, I remember that presentation, whenever it was, twenty-twenty-two or something like that, in this very room around the Community Reinvestment Act and potential funding, we were going to lose it. It was nerve-wracking, even for mine. I think it was nerve-wracking. You know, I have been in touch with you, Director Kappa. I knew that we were, you know, kind of going in the right direction, which was down, but I'm really glad to hear that. You know, we're down to three hundred and sixty-nine months. It's April of twenty-twenty-three. That's a tremendous effort just made in two years. Especially with COVID in there when everything got, really got weird for a while.
You know, and all that, and all that's, you know, credit to all the great partners that we've had, you know, the, the we make sure that they're housed properly, you know, I mean, that's, that's just a huge, you know, part of making sure that these individuals are, it's a accountability piece, you know, you need to make sure that you know where they're at, what they're doing, that they're doing the type of things that they're supposed to be doing, you know, that they're meeting their conditions of probation for all, all those, all those sort of things. And so it's just a huge combination of making sure that we're, that they're following through on their end and having to do all those type of things on our end. Also, I'd like to say that, sorry, everybody, because first, we're going to be celebrating our, our P and P week. So, you know, we'd like to invite the public. We'll be putting something out. We'll be having some kind of a barbecue out in our parking lot. We're kind of tentatively planning on Tuesday, the first week of, of August, and we'll be putting something out. So hopefully, we can get some people to come out, they can meet our staff, and they can talk to people. And our clients are also welcome to come, of course, and it'll be hopefully a time we can talk and meet and sort of.
And for those of you that don't know, usually when the P and P has a barbecue, there's a pretty fierce competition over a cornhole, as I recall. So. All right, well, thank you for being here presenting. And I think with that, I'm ready for motion. So I'll let the next one.
Madam Chair, I would move that we declare July sixteen through twenty-third as probation parole and community supervision week in Lincoln County.
Second motion. Okay, I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, next up is the adoption of our incentive calendar. These are items that are reaching nature and by their staff or commissioners and pulling in for, pulling, I'm writing them off for further discussion or information. And no one has anything they want to pull or further discuss?
We just wanted to, yeah, give a shout out to Andrew Bobbitt and Florence Fullner, they are members of our planning commission. We've been meeting and discussing our various advisory boards, those things required and what they desire, and appreciate making their time.
Yeah, Andrew's been on for a very long time, and I believe Bill even longer, I believe. He was first appointed in like a mid-nineteen seventies. I wouldn't be surprised if he's the longest-serving planning commissioner in the state. And his knowledge and experience is appreciated.
But I believe P I O will be putting out a release for new commissions as well, so. Appreciate it.
Anybody else on that incentive calendar? All right, while I make a motion is adopted, the calendar as presented, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Right, incentive calendar passes. Now on to decision and action items. I made ordinance five, three-one relating taxes, creating new provisions. And then the LCC five zero one zero and five zero one two, referring the ordinance to the voters for approval presented by County Council, Yule, and County Parks Director Polly Perry. So if you've been following along, watching our meetings, this is not the first time we have talked about this. So it's coming back today. So meeting for decision and action, we have had a discussion in the past. So Ms. Perry, if you want to come forward, and then Ms. Yule, if you wanted to recap where, where we are.
Could you pull up the order for this item? I'm starting with the county council. So this came before the board did an expression at your June twenty-first to July fifth meetings. And this is related to adoption of ordinance five thirty-one. It proposes to increase the Lincoln County Transit Logic Act from its current ten percent to twelve percent and dedicates the increased revenues to Lincoln County parks for operations and improvements. If you were to approve this today, it would be referred to the voters from Lincoln County for their approval or rejection at the election scheduled on November seventh, twenty-twenty-three. Any questions?
We don't have any questions.
No questions for me. So before you, you have a proposed order calling for a launch of, from burning the voters. There are two exhibits. One is a notice of measure election, and the second exhibit is an explanatory statement for the county voter's ballot.
Yep, this looks great.
Ms. Yule, clear your question here. So when we go to do a motion, we just need one motion, right, for all the exhibits?
So first, you would make a motion approving the ordinance.
So I would move that we approve ordinance number five thirty-one relating to taxes, creating new provisions, and naming LCCs five-point-zero-one-zero and five-point-zero-one-two and referring the ordinance to the voters for approval.
I'll second the motion. And could I make just a couple of comments here? The county has had a room tax for approximately fifty years. In all of those decades since, it's only been increased three times. So I think, you know, we're not guilty here of going back to the well too often. And ultimately, of course, it will be the voters' choice, but I hope, and I know we all hope, that they will make this investment in their community parks.
Nice. Thank you.
I see. So, yes, thank you. And I think you were, so very, very excited about this, listening to those.
All right, I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. Now back to Ms. Yule. What else do we need to do here?
Okay, so the, the second is the order. If you look, the proposed order is calling for the election. And essentially, it authorizes also meaning to make any minor changes to the ballot table or explanatory statements. Just to
Need to make any minor changes to the ballot table or explanatory statements, um, just to comply with legal requirements efforts submitted to the office.
So would the motion need to, uh, consent, you know, one or two?
Um, it does, it would actually be. Just calling an election on November seventh, the title in the proposed order.
It's just one.
Yeah, I would move that we call an election on November seventh, two thousand twenty-three to refer a proposed increase. In the transient lodging tax to the voters of Lincoln County.
I'll second.
Hey, all favors say aye.
Aye. Or Miller, or you get to the point where you need some bifocals?
All right. All right, moving on, under decision actually to item B, twenty twenty-three foreclosure of location, uh, this presented by.
Thank you, Commissioners, um, Mr. Lynn. So as traditional every year, um, the treasurer's office, um, so it's spent from local newspapers. And this year we have three options, um. Historically, we've gone with one newspaper, the New Times or the New Star. Um, there's a proposal here that the New Times will run, um, one publication on a date in August. And then the second publication would be on a consecutive date by the New Star, and that is the proposal that, um, that the cost of the thing. Um, that we are proposing, so you can get more coverage of the entire county with a publication.
And I'm assuming that publishing the first and one paper and the second and others still needs legal requirements, is it? Any questions, Commissioners?
No questions for you.
I'll move that we approve the recommended list of foreclosure publication, uh. Announcements, uh, as recommended by staff.
So I think we have to pick what.
That's what you just described.
Okay, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Hey, thank you. All right, moving on to discussion information, uh, first up is wintering and sheltering proposal presented by our Health and Human Services Director, Jane Romero.
Thank you, and good morning, and for the record, um, Jane Romero, Health and Human Services Director. For Lincoln County. Uh, so I am here to share plans underway for the development of a winter shelter program here in Lincoln County. Um, the program that we are working to develop under the auspices of Health and Human Services would be a nightly shelter. That would operate October first through March thirty-first in both, uh, Newport and Lincoln City, that's what we're working toward. And I think as we all know, um, uh, most recently, the winter shelter batteries that we've had have been temperature controlled. And so, uh, that creates a bit of a challenge because we can't predict what the weather will do and when, which leads to challenges with volunteer recruitment. And we know from listening to folks who, the nonprofits who have very graciously offered these programs, that there are other challenges, just including. Um, safety concerns, security concerns, uh, drug use in those shelters and just, you know, problems that crop up in the facilities. So, uh, as a result, we are moving forward to develop the shelter program and the program that we have in mind and is, um, in. Progress because we really need to work and consult with just a wide range of community partners. But the, the general foundation would include, uh, hiring a full-time shelter coordinator position. This position would be responsible for the operation of the shelter during the winter months. Uh, working with community partners, et cetera, but during the off-shelter months would really be working on funding to continue the program. Supply drives, uh, volunteer recruitment and training, um, and, um, policy development, referral procedures to link people to needed services and so forth. Uh, we are proposing that we would have two paid staff at all times in the shelters and that would sure, serve as shelter hosts. Uh, collect data, uh, take responsibility for those referrals. Um, and we would also work with the faith community, nonprofit organizations, interesting citizens to have volunteers that commit on a rotating basis to do other things. Um, meal and snack handouts, um. Leisure activities, playing cards, just, you know, being supportive to the folks who are in the shelter program. Um, we are working with the Housing Authority of Lincoln County to secure site control and we are very close here in Newport. Uh, and we are, uh, exploring options in Lincoln City as well. The, um, let me see if I, if I left anything out, oh, I think a, a benefit, of course, of having the program operate through the auspices of. Health and Human Services, of course, is that we provide primary health care through our community health clinics and, uh, three cities in our county. And we're also the county mental health provider, and we know from the recent, uh, work done by, um, the consulting. Let me make sure I say it correctly, Marat McCloud, um, we know that about forty-six percent of the population here in the county do have a mental illness. Among other healthcare issues, so there's, you know, that nice relationship that we can bring to the program, because of the other services that we offer.
And harm reduction as well, and thank you, yes.
And our production. And of course, uh, we coordinate one of the behavioral health resource networks for people with addiction, so, uh, a lot of resources we can bring to the table. I do have a couple of requests to put before you too, but before I go there, I will see if you have any questions about the shelter program in general.
I don't have any questions, if, if you and I have been locked at the hip together, along with Karen Rockwell, and I was very trying to get this done, but. I know you have had a conversation with Mr. Hall, Mr. Miller, we have really had a. Conversation together, and while you and I have presented, uh, um, Lincoln City City Council. Cross my mind, but you never had presented here, so I was kind of, I couldn't correct that, so, um, thank you for being here, I'm, I'm just really excited. Uh, to be taking this step and to bring this type of shelter service to the county, and just to get the right, the right one for us, so, thank you.
Thank you, uh, first off, I've gotta say, I am thrilled that we're finally at the point of being able to do this, you know, people. Have asked me, they, they've been aware that we provided, uh, emergency sheltering at the. Com- commons exhibit hall for some time, but, you know, why weren't we doing more to provide shelter? Well. Sad thing is, uh, it's not among our legal mandates. It's expensive, you know, Tim and I had a long talk yesterday about several things, including. This project and getting a shelter going and maintaining it, and then the other task we have under. House Bill forty-one twenty-three is also setting up, uh, what they call a sustainable navigation center, now whether that's just, uh. A phone line or actually maybe a physical location at, at the shelters, the walk-in service, uh. I just, I guess my number one request at this point, I know you've already provided us with one breakdown, but maybe a more. Detailed, uh, fiscal breakdown of operations, you know, because again, I'm thrilled, but I'm also worried. That we're taking this leap, uh. Not, you know, there's, nothing is ever one hundred percent certain, but this is. Kind of a whole new thing for us, and I think the only worst thing than not doing it at all would be to do it, to do it badly and have to close in a year or two.
Well, I appreciate that, um, you're taking, taking with me, um. And it's occurred to me in this moment too, that there's a lot of good reasons why it should be us to make the leap. Um, certainly, community buy-in from our other jurisdictions would be, you know, super helpful. Um, but if we're going to forge a new path, then I'm confident, we've got the team that can make it happen and. You know, to Commissioner Hall's comments, yeah, I think we want to make sure that. All of our programs are dovetailing with the opportunity to make it happen, but, um, you know, it's for. We're taking the opportunity and with the risk that comes to, you know, make this kind of change, because my sense is that. Um, we need it, and so let's try and make it work, and I support you.
And your requests of us, yes.
Uh, I have, uh, kind of three requests, one is actually funding for the full-time coordinator position to come from the general fund, and I suppose that would have to. Um, occur through a future budget, budget amendment from county administration, but, um, the budget that we have outlined would call for about a hundred and eight thousand dollars. Uh, the second request would be that we, uh, that we transfer those funds into the Health and Human Services Behavioral Health Fund. Which is fund two oh nine, and we create a new department. Uh, into which these funds and the future funds that we will be able to secure through fundraising and grant writing and so forth would be placed. So it's sort of a one-two step, and then the third request is to be able to tap our funds for grant writing support. I think to your point, Commissioner Hall, um. Funding is going to be to be an ongoing effort, and I think that's really why we need a full-time coordinator who, um. Uh, outside of the winter months can really focus on grant writing. Um, a long time ago in my history, I directed a, a fairly large organization supporting homeless and not, then near homeless individuals in Albuquerque, New Mexico. St. Martin's Hospitality Center, and I can tell you, I spent a lot of time journeying over rocks, looking for funding and so forth. So it is there, it needs dedicated support. Um, and I think it would be my goal as well, that we don't start something that can't exist, and so I can appreciate that, yeah.
Yeah, I know, we're way up your list, so I would say, um, on number three, the top ARPA funds for grant running support in our original, um, our allotment. Year ago or something like that, not, not the recent one, the first one. And we do have funds in there for grant writing support, and I think there's still quite a lot of funds, uh, that are in there, so. Um, I think that's an easy one, because we already did as a board, um, a lot of that money, we already have it set aside for the grant running support, so. I think that's fairly easy to say yes, because we already did. Part of that purpose, um. In fact, I think that's where we're paying for some of the grant running support for the separate already, if I do recall, yeah, okay, so maybe we were using that. No, it's so, um, uh, item two, the transfer, um, you know, dollars in the two oh nine for behavioral health funds. I think back to item one, which is, uh, you know, general fund positions, I think that's a different discussion we need to have around budget and that kind of stuff, but I think. Um, even while we're waiting to have a discussion, creating a separate fund under behavioral health for this, I think absolutely means to happen, because we do anticipate. Funding coming in, um, from some grant sources, I know we've asked, you know, reach out to Samaritan and. Reach out to the city of Lincoln City, and I think we do that with other cities, so just kind of from a, uh. Cleaning it up perspective internally, we absolutely need to create a separate fund for this, because the money is circumstantial. Would seem to be organized in that kind of way, and then I think we do need to have, um, a discussion with, uh, our administrator Johnson and, and, um, Percy to share. Around, you know, general funds and if we can actually. Do that or not, but, um, I think we can move on to step two easily and at least create the fund there to be able to receive funds and, and keep it straight, so.
Yeah, and Madam Chair, a question for Commissioner Johnson. Uh, just looking forward, is that same due to you, is it something we can do outside of the budget running process?
So. We just completed the budget, looking at this, uh. Recommendation by staff is to pursue an amended. You know, budget, uh, in the first meeting of August for your review, which will include this. Uh, the recommendation is a line item, this position in the general fund. And I value that, uh, in exploring further, we have identified the funds to be there.
Yeah, I guess the one thing I would just say is. The county always paid for sheltering, it wasn't just always us doing it, so while, you know, I think, um, there Romero said the full-time former mayor was in with salary and after you know, like, that was about hundred and eight. Um, you know, that's not too far from what we already paid to have this happen every year, so. Um, you know, it is a, a little bit more of an investment, um, in that, but it's not a huge, uh, investment compared to what we were already paying. Hey, thank you, any other questions? All right, moving on to again, my discussion and mention for those outside of urban renewal plan, we had a slight event change. Uh, I guess that's one of our, that one of our, it's gonna be here, it's gonna be our, it's gonna be our, we're sending, um, Lincoln City economic development. Sorry, no, there's a name on proposed now, government renewal plan, sorry, I'll send it in a link, come on up.
Good morning to you all, thanks for having us. My right ass, okay. I'm an introvert, so my. So I'm wondering if there's a PowerPoint.
Is that your memo in the fashion sauce?
I think there was a separate PowerPoint.
Seen a bit of.
Uh, so I'll just go ahead and introduce myself, I'm, I'm Robertson with Lincoln City Economic Development. And urban renewal, and today with me is Elaine Power, with Lincoln Solidity Consulting. And we're here to provide a presentation, I know we've done for you with, um, various steps along the way, and it's not about plan. I wanna just, um, cover basically why the Lincoln City City Council is moving ahead with this plan. Um, it is really to accomplish three things, that is a long-range plan, so, uh, with all planning, we have to start somewhere. Uh, what's proposed is the thirty-year plan, and, uh. That plan really has three main components, the first is to provide transportation, infrastructure and connectivity with road systems. To help alleviate traffic from Highway one oh one and help with emergency routes and road choice in general. Um, that objective is lifted in the city's transportation system plan. And, uh, so that is one of the main three components, the other is health, and, uh, we all know we're in a helping crunch, um. Might be a minimizing term, crisis might be better, and, um. Without infrastructure, housing can't happen, um, a lot of times developers can't quite make something pencil because there isn't the full infrastructure and the shovel-ready site. Um, there are properties located within the city and also within the urban growth boundary that are zoned for housing development, and. We understand that those property owners are having active conversations about developing housing. Um, and there are road connections that we need to go through those properties, so without urban renewal as a separate funding source. We don't know if those developers will be able to find sufficient funding to make those projects happen. And then thirdly, um, jobs. We, Lincoln City, uh, know that we are primarily a tourism-based economy, and this area includes. Um, in the UGB and the county's jurisdiction, really the only light industrial and manufacturing land. That, uh, is available for non-tourism-based job production, we're talking about living wage jobs. Um, this property is all privately owned, and so this would take time to have conversations with property owners. Who are located in the urban renewal area as proposed, to see if they want to. Maximize the value of their land, maybe combine land and have conversations about how to attract. Investors to increase jobs. Um, that could be something through the blue economy, that could be something that we haven't thought of, but. Again, with thirty-year plan, you have to start somewhere, and if there are no funding sources available, then the conversation is more challenging. I wanted to mention that those are the three main purposes of why the city is, um, working on this draft plan. Uh, so we'll go ahead, thank you so much for finding that PowerPoint, uh, we'll go ahead and, and move through the PowerPoint and then, um, happy to answer questions and, and hearing you discussion and, and. Uh, so the role of the county is really to review the NELSDA urban renewal tax increment finance plan. Um, as an impacted factor, so I believe we have ten. Maybe eleven, um, overlapping surrounding districts, and we have, uh, provided information as part of the consultant process. Of forming a new urban renewal area, and, uh, so that's the first thing is to review the plan for you all, and then to consider a resolution approving that plan. Uh, the resolution is required due to, as I mentioned before, there is proposed area in the urban growth boundary. The resolution is required due to, as I mentioned before, there is proposed area in the urban growth boundary, it's jurisdiction. So this shows the boundary. As you all have seen before, if you notice within your jurisdiction, there's a blue line and going east of that blue line. The lower large rectangular portions are the residential acreage that is being discussed. Property owners are having conversations with housing developers about how to make that happen. And then other properties along Twenty Third that have, that are not in orange, those are the property owners that have expressed an interest that they would like to be excluded from the area. We have had great conversation with some of those members and some of those property owners have shared their conversation and information and interest selecting someone else, one of the other property owners to speak kind of on behalf of those property owners. I believe there's thirteen or fourteen total that requested to be left out. They understand that that means that they would not be able to receive urban renewal program funding. They may still have some benefit if there are adjacent or other projects in the area at some point in time, and the plan should be adopted, that it could benefit them, but they won't be able to actually have let's say like a zero percent interest loan for pre-development on these or something like that through urban renewal. That may mean that they have other sources of funding available, but for urban renewal money, they wouldn't be able to take benefit of any programs. So Elaine, do you want to talk about the acreage?
Sure. In Oregon, cities and counties have limitations on the amount of urban renewal that they can have. For a city the size of Lincoln City, they may have up to twenty-five percent of their assessed value and twenty-five percent of their acreage in an urban renewal area. So we considered this when forming the Nell Scott Boundary. You can see on the next to the bottom row that after, that Lincoln City does have an existing area, the roads end villages at Cascade Head. And the remaining area allowed for Lincoln City in terms of acreage is four hundred and fifty-seven acres. The proposed Nell Scott Boundary is three hundred and twenty-three, so it is below that twenty-five percent and still has capacity if the city needed or wanted to do another area in the future. And on assessed value, the remaining for a new urban renewal area is about two hundred and sixty-nine million dollars. The frozen base of the Nell Scott area is about one hundred and thirty million dollars. So there's plenty of pattern there, and it is also below the twenty-five percent of allowable both acreage and assessed value.
So as part of this process of creating a draft plan, we got lots of great input from two open houses and an online survey. We asked questions, we got good responses, and then we heard some of the top projects that were of interest are consistent with what we have in the plan.
The other thing we did on public input is we did have an advisory committee that met five times. That advisory committee was comprised of the mayor, the urban renewal chair, Mr. Johnson, your county administrator. The school district was invited. They chose not to attend because they'd just been involved in the roads end. They understood the impacts of urban renewal on the schools and then other stakeholders, business owners and people in the community. So on the financial analysis in urban renewal in Oregon, urban renewal is limited by maximum indebtedness. That's the total amount of money you may spend in an urban renewal area on projects, programs, and administration. The projected maximum indebtedness for this area is one hundred and twenty-nine million over a thirty-year time period. So that is money in future dollars. Whenever we're working with a city, we bring that back to capacity in today's dollars, because when we look at project costs, those are all in today's dollars. So that way we can figure out what they can actually spend that money on and how much. So bringing that back using a three percent discount rate comes to a capacity of sixty-eight million, seven hundred thousand dollars. You can see that that capacity is very small in the beginning years, years one through five, and that is because you are just looking at that three percent growth on property values within the area during that time period. So there is not a lot of tax increment that comes in. That growth typically happens later in an urban renewal area. Once you are able to do some projects to help facilitate that development to occur. So within this area, it starts off very slowly. Year six through ten, about eight point three million dollars, and then more as you move forward. And in the final years, the capacity is about twenty-one million dollars. These are the project categories within the plan and the projected cost in the actual year of expenditure dollars. So that one hundred and twenty-eight million is just below the one hundred and twenty-nine million dollars of maximum indebtedness. These categories are fairly broad, but we wanted to be able to show the percentage allocations to the different project categories. So for economic development and land acquisition, about twenty-seven percent of the funds is allocated to that, so about thirty-five million dollars. Emergency preparedness, less, less than one percent of the total amount of money. But emergency preparedness, also some of the other categories overlap with that, like the transportation and the ability to provide different alternate routes within this area for emergency issues. Parks is about thirteen million dollars or ten percent of the money. Transportation, fifty-two million dollars or forty-one percent of the money. Utilities, so the water, sewer, stormwater, twenty, about twenty-two million or seventeen percent. Funding and community involvement, under one million, administration, about four point two million or a little over three percent. And then financing fees for any long-term loans or bonds of under a half percent. So that is the allocation within the plan. All of the funding in an urban renewal area is set out at the time you adopt it. But knowing that you have a long-term plan, those funds can be moved from one category to the other as circumstances change or grants come in or other funding sources come in, and you're able to specifically identify where those funds are needed and happen. That's typically done through the annual budgeting process so that it is an open public process when and if the agency decides to move funds from one category to another.
Madam Chair, for that second question at this point, so the three priorities you mentioned at the start of this presentation, transportation, housing, jobs, which of these categories would that would that reflects an investment in housing?
Yes. Pretty much anything that is transportation or public utility. So water, sewer, we could talk about communications, broadband, high-speed internet, those kinds of things. Utility undergrounding, I don't remember if I mentioned that, and roads. You could, one could make the argument parks as increased to livability, community benefit would sometimes be a part of housing project. And land acquisition or economic development. So we have done pre-development grants or partnership funds where someone might need an archaeological survey or a tree survey or a geotechnical survey or any of those things to help provide information to the developer of how expensive that development is going to be. Those would be economic development tools that could be used for development.
I, yeah, good question, Commissioner. I actually have the same question, but around jobs. Like, where in these categories is the goal for jobs?
Yeah, that's a great question, Commissioner. I'm kind of the same answer, and the reason is because for any development, regardless of what the intended purpose of that development is, it's going to need the same things. We would just tie it to jobs. So there might be I'm trying to think of an example that wouldn't be a living wage job and wouldn't be housing. Let's say a tourism use that's commercial like a water park. Probably we would not be looking to do land acquisition, roads, utilities to make a water park happen, because I don't know if the jobs would be living wage, and it's a tourism purpose. It's not about sustainable, long-term, living wage, non-tourism jobs. So that would be an example, but development, any, any type of development would need the same types of things to get a site as shovel-ready as possible. With the consideration that these are dollars and there's only so much public dollar investment that should be helpful to a developer that then really is responsible for the cost of that development. So we're talking about using these funds in partnership ways, not in hey, we rolled out the red carpet and now you get this windfall of money from this development. But what is, what is your pro forma? What is your feasibility scenario? What are you providing? How long will you be providing that? And then things like, you know, we've made these partnership funds available for you to make this project happen, but are you going to walk away in two years and take your jobs with you? Those are the types of, of things that if this plan is adopted, those are the conversations that will need to be had with developers in order to attract those developers that are serious about job production for what the purposes are that the Urban Renewal Agency is trying to achieve.
The next couple of slides show impacts on taxing districts. So I know the county represents some of the other taxing districts besides just the county. We do those projections on an annual basis. And those projections include both the three percent which happens organically through the assessor's office unless we're in a deep recession and the assessor doesn't believe assessed values are increasing. But these also include the projection of future growth. That future growth probably won't happen unless the transportation network is put in and the other utilities are put in. So these impacts do include the assumption that urban renewal is able to raise the amount of funds to provide the infrastructure necessary for this area to develop. So if you look at the county itself, it is about twenty-nine million dollars over that thirty-year time period. So it is an investment to that area to help provide those jobs and help provide the transportation network to allow those areas to develop both into economic development and housing. And then you can look at the other, the county extension, county animal services. County transport is maybe your responsibility also. Yes. So all of those are impacted by the proposed area. That, that is how urban renewal functions.
Exciting.
This shows the impacts on the education districts. Education is a little different from the general taxing districts. The impacts we call are indirect because it's an impact on the, either the state school fund or the community college fund. The legislature has the ability to tap other funding sources to backfill that and not money that doesn't come in off of permanent rate levies. So all of the schools, the school district and the education service district are funded on a per pupil basis. That amount does not go down because you have urban renewal within your county or city.
Excite.
The process for adopting a new urban renewal plan is to have public input. The city has done that through the task force and through the open houses, the online survey. The agency reviewed the plan on June twelfth and directed that it be sent out to the taxing jurisdictions. You, as a taxing district, receive that plan and report. The consultant, and that's called the consultant confer process, notice was sent to all of the utility customers within, within the city of Lincoln City to the unincorporated properties within the area, and then also to those property owners who were originally within the area but chose to go out just to make sure that they understood that when they look at the map that their request to be out of the district was agreed upon. The plan commission last night voted unanimously that the plan conforms to the city's comprehensive plan and asked the city council to adopt the plan because it helps implement the comprehensive plan. The county, we have this briefing. You then have a scheduled meeting on August second to consider the adoption of a resolution. And again, for the city to actually adopt the plan, you need to adopt the resolution. If you don't adopt the resolution, the city is not able to adopt the plan in its present form. The vote, the hearing is on August fourteenth. The vote is scheduled for August twenty eighth.
I have a lot of questions. In the case of a property that's a residence that is subject to sewer, it may still be in the district but opt out of those services, or is that legally required to, say, take on municipal sewer water when it comes?
Yeah, that's a great question. So I think the, the kind of elephant in the room that we have had some conversation about is annexation. I think that you know, there haven't been any formal conversations with the city council about annexation. I have heard from some of the property owners that they understand that they live in or have a business in the urban growth boundary, that that is kind of understood that at some point in the future, could be tomorrow, could be eighty years from now, we don't know, but urban growth boundaries are designed at some point to have urban growth. If or when annexation occurs is a whole separate part of that. But with city services would come the need for annexation. We, we haven't really thought about who, when, if we would want to do that voluntarily. And that would be my recommendation in staff is if a property owner wants to do something with their property beyond what they're doing now, that we have conversations about timing of services, timing of projects. I don't believe that taxes should go up for a property owner until they're receiving a benefit of a public service that's above and beyond what they're currently receiving. So those are just my personal professional recommendations to decision makers about that type of things with public utilities. As Elaine mentioned, with the revenue projections that are only estimates, they're kind of upper limit estimates, so they are what we would like to see happen as a maximum growth scenario over the area that within the first few years, things are pretty quiet. There's not much revenue that, that is coming in, and it takes a few years for there to be enough revenue to have what we call community visioning. That is the first step that Lincoln City does with urban renewal plans in the past. And what we plan to do with the roads end area is once there's enough money, have a community vision, which is kind of a check-in again with the plan. What can we do? What can't we do? And what really are the community and stakeholder needs? And that includes the county, it's ODOT and state parks and basically the property owners or whatever is in that area. Have a conversation and focus group discussions about what projects are of highest priority, maybe what projects aren't needed at this time, and then really talk about what is that community vision? So I don't know the timing of when the urban growth boundary property owners might be interested in having that conversation. You know, we, we've done four community visions, Lincoln City has with the old urban renewal area, and we'll have one, maybe two with the roads end area, depending on how unified those projects are across the area. It could be that there needs to be two at different times. But in this case, I think that there are definitely two kind of sub-areas within this proposed area, because one is focused more on jobs and industrial growth. And obviously in the UGB, and then the rest is residential and maybe more tourism. You know, because it has beach access and stuff like that. So timing is everything. We don't know exactly when services might be available for UGB property owners. That was a short answer.
Well, I think it would be almost impossible to know, you know, to the specific date, but but I think that, that answer kind of gets me a little bit. Uh, but I think that, that answer kind of gets me a little bit.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Chair. Uh, I don't know more than a specific question or questions at this point, just some operation. Uh, uh, opening thoughts. I think Administrator Johnson has provided us with a. Very good staff report that uh essentially suggests that if we do go ahead with this, you know, we look. To some kind of more. Formalization of. The relationship after the district is completed, making sure that we have regular. Impacts on what things it's actually improving as a catalyst for. And I don't mean to uh be picking in any way of the two women in front of us, you know, I'm, I'm not going to. Ask uh. Lincoln City, now Scott Urban Renewal to die for past commissioners since including us and since is a pretty strong word, but. You know, there used to be a mayor in this county who uh said he loved urban renewal because it's free money. And. There's no such thing, of course, as free money and yes, you know, in the past, we've basically, I think, as a board and our predecessors. Basically said, hey, we want to be good neighbors, good partners. You've got a urban renewal plan that checks all of the boxes. And uh. You know, so we'll say good on you, give our blessing and. We don't really check back. For decades, it seems like if ever. So that's just opening thoughts for me.
Thanks, Commissioner Hall. So I have several questions. Um. So which one do I want to start? So I just want to get clarity that even though housing is one of your goals, isn't building housing per se, is my understanding is you can't use this money to actually build housing. It's putting in the infrastructure and then waiting for a developer to actually come along and build the house. Kind of accurate.
Sure, we, we may not wait for the developer. We may do the infrastructure when we have the developer. Timing is everything when it comes to utilities. Uh, but yes, that, that.
This money in the building, the housing, it's, it's putting in the infrastructure for someone else to build the house.
To make a lower barrier for house developers.
That's what it could, it could actually be used if the city council and agency decided to acquire properties. And help facilitate that development because property values are going up so quickly, sometimes just. Acquiring that property and being able to hold it until a developer comes forward. So that, that could happen. That's part of that.
Oh, the city area, how much property they have already owned for quite a while that hasn't been developed. Yeah. So the, the city's taking a look at what properties we own so that we can report out to the public on what percentages are being used for what. Um, whether it be sewer treatment plant, water treatment plant, parks, um so that there's a, an understanding of how much developable land the city actually has, which is not much. Um, the innovative housing Inc. project that's under construction right now is a hundred and seven income qualified apartments, a nonprofit developer. That was city land. The reason they were able to get to a hundred and seven units it from eighty originally is because urban renewal bought. Portion of property at highway one oh one. That is an example of use of urban renewal money and leveraging for housing development.
Yeah, that's a really nice example. Thank you. Um, so I guess another question I have, it was back during the presentation and I forgot which one of you said it, but we were looking at kind of the tables. Uh, I think with tax assessments and that comment was something like. The future growth percentages would, would only be there if the infrastructure goes on. Um, and if the infrastructure isn't there, there wouldn't be growth. I don't quite understand being about that, you mean above the three percent?
Yes, exactly. So three percent on bare land versus three percent on if there's a building versus new developed area. Would obviously increase the taxable value of that property.
Mm-hmm.
Um, often and most likely development can't happen without the necessary utilities. So there may be properties that don't have water, that don't have sewer, that don't have roads that are required as part of development. Um, that. Aren't developing because those costs are out of reach for that property owner. So the idea is the utilities. Uh, make that development happen, which increases the taxable value of the.
Okay, I'm with you. Thank you. So I'm kind of jumping, I'm kind of jumping around here. Apologies. So there was a map you looked at in the beginning, which I think is your current. You know, project map and there have been some property owners who can create that some communication of them as well, um that. You know, don't want in. And so I guess I just want to make. Like make sure I understand this. And those particular property owners, make you can, the front of the map. Those particular uh property owners that want it out, so they wouldn't be included in this, they don't want to be. Um, so. Even though bringing them into their urban growth boundary is kind of a different process. Are we still looking at a potential to have this weird pocket of unincorporated Lincoln County still there with? When people brought into the city of Rambit. That makes sense.
That are you, are you worried about the hole in the donut?
Yes.
Uh, so, so that is possible.
Okay.
Um. I can't predict what interest there will be, if any, in annexation. Um, I can't predict. Uh, the timing of which parcels might have interest in annexation in the thirty years that this plan is proposed for. Um, I think that there are. Obvious um financial considerations with annexation. About timing, about maximizing that administratively. Um, so. I, I just, uh. So I guess conceivably it is possible that one by one tax lot in the urban renewal area or even outside the urban rural area. Expresses an interest to annex for some reason. Usually that would be because they have a development interest. Whether it's their own or a partnership within, with the developer and that they're looking for utilities. Uh, as a requirement of that development.
Great, thank you. Wait, and we have a few of these in other places in the county and I.
Yeah.
Don't love them.
Well, I share that.
I, I think it's something like this, how it happens, so.
And yeah, uh, sorry to kind of interrupt your flow, but. Uh, Minister Johnson has a staff report too when we're done with Elaine and Allison and it's.
Good question. Uh, yes, I was gonna, we're gonna highlight this time provided us a, a memo as well, so it's gonna have. They're gonna time out and I actually have a question for them too, so um, see that's how we'll do that. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Uh, and this is my last question for the both of you. Um. You can, the very beginning of the presentation, you know, you said that without urban renewal developers wouldn't be able to find sufficient funding to do the structure projects. And I, um. I think part of that is true. I think certainly they didn't need the money to fund infrastructure. I think that's absolutely true. I don't know that I agree that urban renewal was kind of the only way to find that funding. So I guess my question is. Has there been other funding sources besides urban renewal looked at for funding sources? There's a ton of money right now through the. Infrastructure Investment Jobs Act. Or infrastructure, has the city gone after any of those funds? You know, what, what other sources have been looked at besides urban renewal?
So the city. The city has looked at those sources. I, I'm not in the public works department, so I can't speak directly about those projects. It's my understanding that those sources are. Have a higher likelihood of being obtained if you have a design. All ready to go. Um, and urban renewal funds can pay for designs. Um, we just, uh, I believe bid a project. Uh, that urban renewal designed and handed over to public works. Public works uh worked with ODOT to receive funding for a. Cutler City sidewalk along private one oh one. And um that project has been in design for fits and starts since two thousand and fifteen. That's an example. It's five hundred and forty thousand from ODOT. Um, I don't remember how much the design cost was. I want to say maybe a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand. For design. That was paid for by the old urban renewal area. So that is an example of leveraging urban renewal with other outside funding sources now. Could the city have? Paid for the design costs for that project? Possibly, probably, um definitely it's within their purview to do that. I don't know if that project would have been. As high of a priority for the city. If urban renewal hadn't had a community vision done in two thousand and eight for the Cutler City area. So that was the benefit of urban renewal in that case. But yes, there are other funding sources besides urban renewal. Um, they are more competitive and um obviously we wouldn't be looking at them outside the city area. Um, so urban renewal is what the city has decided they'd like to pursue to work on this U G B area. Um, with your support and approval. So, um, I just think that it's tougher and it is. So maybe these projects can all still happen. They just won't happen as quickly. Um, and they won't happen. With, with, this is local control, so it is usually faster.
Hmm, so how still?
Yeah.
I guess where I'm going here is just now there's costs, so I'll put other taxing specs on this, um especially when I look at. Now the memo provided by Administrator Johnson and, you know, counties with the most tax increment financing district, Maloma, Blackness, Washington, Gary and Lincoln. And actually if, um, this, Jacob, the president of the former, I understand, we passed the area and being before. And we are not at all, I think, the top three count in terms of revenue, in terms of people, et cetera. And so. You know, there is a cost of this to our existing, you know, tax districts and, um. You know, I think we're out of place and we have to start considering that. Have to also start considering this in our smaller cities that maybe haven't utilized this. Um, before, um, you know. Anyways, that's just one of my thoughts are at. One thing I would like to see from address my comment to. Administrator Johnson is, uh, in the late, right, it was very, thank you. I think the one thing that would be helpful for me and maybe other commissioners as well is, um. Looking at all our existing uh urban renewal districts as well as the SIP for U G P. And understanding when those started and when those retirement dates are. That would be really helpful to kind of see where, where we're at. Um. I guess where I'm going is. I think beyond just this Lincoln City project, I think we need to. Come up with a plan on, on how we're saying yes and how we're saying no, on things to consider or not consider or whatever. Um, I think Commissioner Hall's um comments earlier about how it's been in the past are completely accurate. Um, I think understanding where we're at and what some of these existing ones are going to retire. Um, I think would be helpful to kind of see in the overall picture. So. Um, thank you. Yeah.
Yes, I'm wondering, was that memo part of the public packet or?
I think was added this morning.
Okay, so we'll, we'll check it out there. Thank you.
All right, Administrator Johnson, anything you wanted to um add to the presentation? I know that you need to read us the entire memo. You, you sent us a writing, but um anything you want to add later.
Thank you very much. I think that was considered for the presentation. Um. I think that uh my comments in the uh group, the staff report are not reflective of this request. They are reflective. Of tax increment financing and the cumulative impacts on our county. And I think it's a, a apparent issue that you should be aware of as it pertains to uh the pistol implications on the county. Um, again, as you know, uh noted, and we wanted to ensure you that you knew this, is that. Uh, we're a big company. Right now we have eight of these uh districts. And we also have a SIP which is similar in nature to its impact, although we got to negotiate that. But only later to find that there would be some complications associated with that action as well. To that point, if you add this, then we're at nine districts, uh excluding the SIP. Uh, which puts us in um what I would call a dizzy. Uh, territory in terms of, of height. Uh, to your point, Chair. Um, we do not have the tax base of Maloma, Blackness or Washington. But that's who, that's who we would be spending, uh sharing space with at this particular point in time. Estimates that we have, uh, that both the county assessor and I have looked at, uh, well along with finance is that. When we add the cumulative totals that are lost in revenue generation. Goes to us directly to the county and in its individualized districts. Comes up to about two million dollars a year. To your question relative to beginning of these districts and conclusion of these districts. Uh, we've had, uh. Several districts created uh recently, Toledo, uh the Lincoln City uh current. Um, district, um their proposed district. And then of course in twenty twenty one. I'm sorry, twenty twenty, the SIP uh in Toledo for the Georgia Pacific Plan. So those will extend over many, many years. And what you have is a shifting of these resources. Even if one is coming off, I know what you're looking for. You're looking for cash flow as it relates to revenue generation and it just constantly just keeps shifting. And it's the same number year after year. So. For the purposes of this discussion. When we start a new fiscal year, we're ostensibly two million dollars in the hole. Now, there's nothing that's wrong with that except for the fact that when county staff looks at trying to budget. The dilemma is the building that we're sitting in. Is known with through a report that is seismically unsafe in this territory. And as such, trying to find dollars in our budget after we've already. They had to have them uh lost to urban renewal with no return on investment for us. In an immediate manner for us to go out and bond in order to create. A new building, a safe and secure building. It is just lighthearted in the fact that it is about the same amount of money that would be necessary for the principal investment. Necessary to build a new courthouse. So it becomes a frustrating effort, but to that point, and again, this, these are not aimed at Lincoln City. These are aimed at the cumulative impacts from tax increment findings. But to that point, I, I spent, it was forty years ago today. I aged myself to Mr. Hall. It's forty years ago today that I did the first tax increment urban renewal district east of the Gas Gaze and then. And when you look at downtown, then the issue associated at that point was truly blight. The loss of seven um timber mills, uh the movement away of Saint Charles Hospital. From the downtown to the eastern portion of Ben, uh the loss of, of tax revenue associated with that for the city of Ben. And corresponding other issues really cited blight. In the key issue today, specifically in current literature, one most recently written by the University of Chicago Law Review. Illustrates the fact that are we really looking at glider or are we in a discussion of under investment? And when Oregon wrote their legislation, it was similar to California's in the late nineteen fifties and, and then. Adopted by the legislature, I believe, at nineteen sixty. But we've gone through all sorts of different um machinations of. Uh, economic development tools. And I'm not so certain that with the changes. That have occurred relative to our property tax limitation act. Compression and other issues, we have really validated and in our, our, our economic development tools. As specific to this case of tax increment urban renewal. And that it has really served the purpose of where it is today. Because let's, let's be honest with one another. Identification of the individual elements that the county is impacted by. The voters voted for countywide, voted for an animal uh services uh district. That's a countywide um ballot. It was approved. Now. The dilemma that has happened over the years is that. The voter expected they would have X amount of money because they voted for that and it was in uh on the ballot that that's what it would receive. Little did the, the voter recognize that because of. The way that state legislation is written. It would actually usurp. The funding sources of these monies when you initiate an urban renewal district and it actually diminishes. The amount of money that a voter approved district would receive. Reformations that have been done under. Reformations that have been done under urban renewal at the state level have changed over the years whereby. One of the major reforms was to backfill to educational, uh, service organizations. And they have been made in part whole, but some of these others have, and as such. Um, we're then left with having to look at how we also have to backfill, um, county extension services. Our transit agency, and of course, our animal services district. And so these constitute a perplexing situation when we try to sit down and balance. So for the, uh, if I may, Chair, uh, we identified seven recommendations to the board. Approve of this district and as it pertains to all new future. Uh, tax increments, urban renewal districts, and one of them is to begin to ensure that each city, um. When they proceed with a urban renewal district, that there is an initial audit of all conflicting incentives. Current and in the future associated with tax increment, and we were witnessing that. Um, the second one is to require. The individ- each individual city to have an annual presentation before the commission. On the district along with all program and financial data. Three is to review impacts on existing and future county budgets, because I think if you were to do an environmental impact report. Not in this state, but if you went to California and you had a California Environmental Quality Act, that would be the first thing that would be asked. Of any of us, and I think that is why it's beyond the years of legislation that California embarked upon. The next one is, and speaking about California, ensure that housing for homeless and low income is provided, uh. In California, the difference between what was their tax increment urban renewal, which does not exist anymore. Was eliminated several years back, but. The difference between, uh, and I thought it was a very good decision on behalf of California legislative. Is that twenty-five percent of all of the income that would even be forecast, let alone that actually. Uh, was manifested in, uh, they had to be used for housing, uh, and actual construction of housing. And, um, that was a very successful effort. Um, the next one is to ensure that no mitigated adverse impacts occur on the county infrastructure. Or public services that are constituted by a tip project. And lastly, encourage the purchase of goods, materials and services that are used through tax increment or buy local. So those are a framework, again, um, be it. Whether you approve this district or not, all districts, staff is recommending that you consider these points. As the framework for which you develop, and whether you use scale one to ten or some. Other A to D or some other mechanism in which you gauge. The framework for this, we can work on, but this is a recommendation, um, that the county staff has.
Thank you for that, Administrator, do you have some questions, Commissioner?
No, I don't think, I don't think so, just maybe just a statement, I think. Taking objectives ultimately, and expectation of these jobs and all things, um, aware of homeless, um. Wearing shelter, I mean, these are all places we want to get to make our communities better and safer. Uh, more livable for the next generation, so just thank you for your patience and thank you for also your. Attention to details, I mean, I just wanted us to get it right. And, uh, I think that's ultimately what we're trying to do in the long term, so.
Nothing further.
Thanks. Thanks for bearing with us, I think that we all kind of said, there's this particular proposal, and there's this bigger issue. That this is maybe sort of bringing up, so. Um, my understanding is this is coming back for us to set this particular proposal, make a decision on August second. Yeah, right, thank you, thanks.
Thank you, thanks.
Appreciate your time.
Yeah, you're very shared it.
All right, so now we're moving on to reports, Commissioner Hall, any reports?
Uh, nothing at this time, no.
I don't have anything ready for it, Commissioner Miller?
Yes, I have a quick little memo for you, and asking for your consent, so I'll pass it down. Um, the short request is that we. Raise a flag, uh, in memory of the trial of select me and strike. Flag during the week of powwow. Here in the county courthouse, I spoke to tribal chairman Dolores Figsley. Uh, and also Angela Ramirez, she's the Select Tribal Arts and Heritage Society Tribal Council Representative, will provide us with a flag. Well, I don't know, that would be something to be, uh, willing to do as well.
Michelle?
Um. No, I'm just, I think, uh, if any flag. Other than the current one should ever go in front of our courthouse, I'd, uh, put the select tribal flag up there. I think we need to think about how this impacts. Larger policy implications, uh, I know we've already decided not to display additional flags. On the main flagpoles, but to allow for other kind of lawn art in display and. You know, some cities have really struggled over that policy and our policy. Has helped us avoid it, but, you know, perhaps.
And forgive me, did we establish a policy that we wouldn't put additional flags? Uh, I know that.
I I thought we did.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I slept with facilities and, uh. Uh, they said we can accommodate a a secondary flag, but I wasn't married, we made one policy, so forgive me.
Or more informal one?
I know that's been our general practice, I don't know if that's been a formal policy or not. We allow other organizations to place things on the lawn.
Like pinwheels for child awareness month, and I think for domestic violence, a few years, we'd have T-shirt displays in the tree.
Yeah, I I'm completely supportive of doing something for the tribe and for power, I'm totally on board with that. I think this does just sort of against, you know, what is a play policy. Um, we do have requests at different times for things, and I think this mission also other communities have struggled with that. Um, and given that this is coming right up. The suggestion I would maybe make is, um, since we, you know, don't have a a policy and I go until we have one. Um, and we shouldn't do that, but definitely want to support the tribe as well as other organizations, and maybe some type of, you know, lawn art. Thing could be applied, like we've done with some other organizations in the past, that was kind of urgent, oh. Um, we do that, but I would be supportive of the tribe, I mean, I feel that would be a great addition. Um, to a courthouse, so without that kind of formal policy in place, if this has been kind of had one in practice. Maybe not formalized, because something kind of have put that, thoughts about that, Commissioner?
Uh, well, uh, I guess my thoughts, to be clear, was, um, that. Um, you know, and facilities gave me this too.
Right.
So, and did we not? Uh, put this up seamlessly or what?
Yeah, we've had it up for years, but I don't know, I haven't asked lately, but I remember another time when some of the flags were missing. Jack said it was just to have to order new hardware for them, because this, we all know this postal environment can be very harsh, and I think. That, you know, that the police or whatever mechanism, uh, were simply rusted out. But for years, it's been the county flag, the P O W flag, state of Oregon flag, and you know, state was fine.
Well, I mean, if we need to, you know, I'm I'm happy to write something up or legal counsel. Where Administrator Johnson's insisting. You know, finding a policy that we can, we're going, if we don't have enough time for it to get, then I think, so be it. Um, you know, not proposing that we necessarily put or a flag for this topic. So.
Just an inspiration, or whatever, or uh, or not. Um, if we wanted to craft an exemption for the tribal flag, I mean, they are the only. Government, uh, in this county, so we're recognizing another governmental unit maybe, as opposed to an event or a. Smaller group, but.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that, yeah, honestly, I wouldn't mind that. Um, so I I support that, I think so, they are another government in our community, and other governments' flags, they have already. Um, as well as the US, so I think that's a great exemption, I think this just brings a kind of similar, similar to urban renewal, that's like there's. A proposal, but then there's this bigger issue, um, so I I think I'm comfortable moving forward in a way that Commissioner Hall. Presented that, but then I think we probably do need to have a. Uh, you know, different discussion at a different time about not just our play policy, um, or maybe not, we don't have the whole. Groups, but then also, um, you know, we have, again, informally, I always allow nonprofits and subject decorator lawn. Um, we don't have this maybe like a formal way for people to apply and do that, that they can improve, and I think that would be. Helpful, because it seems like it's always been this very last minute, like, oh gee, it's. Child abuse awareness, you know, tomorrow, and I need to get these out, and how it's there, how to do that, but I I think in the. Kind of exemption role that Commissioner Hall discussed.
Uh, so that's all for me.
Yeah, and any question, I mean, the current meeting, okay, now we're moving on to public comments, um.